A buffalo hide, not the fake ones. This is real authentic. Steve Tamayo, who is a local indigenous educator, has been leading our work in that effort. One of the benefits of moving forward, nope, Mark.
No.
I'm real close. So, one of the benefits of being able to be successful in the work that we have done and for this alignment and that it works, we have requested, Minnesota Humanities Center has requested to be able to have additional funding to be able to, or not additional funding, to be able to continue the work forward over the next three years. And happy to announce, Jerry Beck's is back here, that we have been supported and approved for three additional years of funding to be able to continue the impact of the work that has been done so far, expanding into some new areas that allow us to dig far deeper than we have, and then also to broaden the impact that we have. Even though we're in 92 schools, we would like to be able to increase the amount of work that we're able to do in response to the buildings that are the partner schools, but also increase the amount of participation in the schools that are not partner schools.
Thank you.
That was right at 10 minutes.
Right at 10 minutes?
Right at 10 minutes. If I started counting later.
I'll leave an open comments, questions from colleagues on the board. Ms. America?
I just wanted to say from our perspective, this is a topic that we've been planning to have on a board agenda for a while, because as you said at the beginning, there have been so many questions over the years of why are you using a group from Minnesota? Well, it's really not. If you look at that slide, all the names that are in yellow are people who are OPS or used to be OPS but are still connected to the district. So, it's really, it's utilizing our own talent to improve and grow our teachers, administrators, and staff further. I know we had people who were asking questions, well, what does Terra Luna do? What, are you forcing staff to go to these programs? And so, we wanted to have a presentation to explain, no, people aren't forced. This is voluntary, but people are still choosing to do it, because once they take part in it, they see how rewarding it is, what a difference it makes in their teaching and in their classroom. And having talked to some teachers who participated, they, I think, all have gone to multiple offerings now after their first one. So, thank you for bringing this to help, kind of shed light on what it is that we're doing and offering to our district.
You're welcome. And I will say that for the leadership on this particular project over, you know, being involved probably over the last three, for me, externally, internally, over the years that I've been involved, but also my first impact was outside of the district. And Dr. Coleman, who leads the effort, spends arguably enough time here in Omaha to consider herself someone who's in Omaha. When she is here, it's called Homaha, right, Homaha? Homaha. And when she's through the community, they know who she is, and so, she's an involved leader within the particular project. So, that's only one example, but even from the leadership within the organization on this particular project, she is known within the community, she is known within our district, amongst the principals, amongst the staff, and as well amongst, you know, Hilton, you know, they know, you know, if she gets a lot, like, if I need something done at the Hilton, I would probably call her to make a call, because she's got more inroads there to be able to make some things happen. So, even those that are not in Omaha have a very serious invested timeframe that they've put into the work.
Dr. Holman?
Thank you for the presentation, and also congratulations on getting the extended funding to help. As someone who has gone through Minnesota Humanities Training as a previous administrator, only four of the six, so we didn't have the immersions in, or I don't think the reconstructing curriculum at that point in time, but I can definitely say that our teachers walked away with just a tremendous amount of knowledge and understanding, better understanding of our students and what they should be doing differently in the classrooms to reach our students at a deeper level, and understanding them at a deeper level. So, I appreciate you guys sticking with our district. I'm very appreciative that we have so many of our retired OPS people working with Minnesota Humanities. That's awesome to see, because you all know our students in our district firsthand, and so, it's awesome that you all have still dedicated your time and your efforts to helping our district grow, helping our teachers grow, and helping our students to be successful. So, thank you.
Mr. Smith?
Your community collaborative partners, what's their role and how do they support you?
I have a variety of answers for that, but did you want to address?
Good evening, board members and Superintendent Mark Evans. I'm so glad to be here on your last evening. When I first took over this project, Mark Evans was coming in as superintendent, and we had a meeting, and he said to me, you know, the most important thing really is that educators really learn to develop relationships with their students. So, from that point on, we were right there together. As a lifelong educator, we know the value and importance of that, and I just want to be clear that our work is very much tied into achievement. But we feel unless we talk about the ability of young people themselves to understand their role and importance in that process, we're not going to maximize our efforts with that. So, our work is really about how we help educators make that connection with the students, so that there is a shared value and understanding about the importance of the work and how we connect with families. We do extensive work now with families as well. So, the community, we see the community as, the school is, the school district is the hub of the community. You cannot separate them. I think we lose a lot of valuable resources when we don't connect those resources. And as a former school administrator myself for a number of years, I realize that oftentimes the community wants to help us, but they don't know how. Either it's by, well, I know this person or that. So, we use a collective impact model, which means that we sort of barter those relationships and make the connections between a lot of the resources that are in the community to the schools themselves. And we invite them in to dialogue, which is our immersions, as Sharif mentioned. Oftentimes, schoolteachers will be taken out into the community and shown where people live. Our work actually takes them into the community and shows them the resources that are within those communities. They get to talk to people in those communities that are leading youth groups and organizations and faith-based communities that say, we want to help you, we want to be a resource. So, they build those connections, and that's how we've been able to really to connect the work and help the schools to better be able to understand what's important about this community in Omaha. So, that's why this, we are, our central, our grant is with Minnesota Humanities, but our work is Omaha. It's Omaha-based work. That's why you see so many educators that are here. We believe in the centrality of place itself. People need to know what happened here and understand their own history and the part of everyone in this community that's tied to that. So, we're very proud of the relationships, and I have to say, Omaha is an amazing community. There has not been one community group or organization that we've talked with that said, here's what we're trying to do, that said, not interested. They all have jumped in, they've referred us to other people to be engaged with. So, that's a beautiful thing about your community, and I'm very proud to be a Homahad, because it's a welcoming place here, and educators that have worked in the district, that I said, would you like to join us? Of course, they still want to give back to this school district, and that's something to be extremely, extremely proud of as a community.
Thank you. Mrs. Cassidy, did you?
Yeah, just really briefly. I know it's getting late. I just want to thank you all for staying and for bringing this refreshing topic. We don't always get to hear about programs, and there's lots of great things going on in our district and great programs. And I knew nothing of this until it came up on our agenda, and I did read your slideshow and did some research. What a refreshing, refreshing program, just really cool. It's neat to see that there are things like this that are going on that are making such an impact on our teachers, professional development to them, and our students. So, I just want to thank you for bringing this to us. Again, someone that did not know that this existed until the meeting, can you speak a little bit about the funding? And then, how many schools do you anticipate, which since your funding has increased for three years, do you anticipate more schools becoming the partner schools? And how does that process look?
So, I will allow Dr. Coleman to address this, address it, but one element is that the increases in time, I'm not speaking of dollars. So, the, three years ago, we received funding to allow us to be able to continue through this year, and so, the request and grant proposed was so that we could do an initial three years. So, the increases increase in time, I wasn't speaking financially, that does not mean that we would be exclude, just sticking with the 21. A lot of our schools get to a point, our schools get to a point as a partner to where they are operating in the stages of implementation so well, that though they may be a partner school, they've gone to the different offerings, they're implementing the different programs that often allow us to be able to look at additional ones. But Dr. Coleman, did you want to speak to addition possibilities?
Yes, we had a bowl of 20 schools that would cycle through. However, our first 20 schools don't want to leave us. So, and we're having a very difficult time making that work and thinking, because we can't fund every school. So, we really have diversified our offerings, and we will be hopefully bringing on an additional five more schools this year, because we believe in that concept of a community of practice, that you have to go really deep in a school in order to really shift the culture and change the dynamics of that school to, and to get the number of participants in there that you want in order for schools to really work together. Sorry, Principal Kush had to leave, and Principal Lee, they are two of our most amazing partner schools that are doing fantastic, fabulous work in those buildings. But our goal is to each year bring on five, and then we, some of our schools that have been with us longer, we kind of stepped back in the amount of support that we give them, and they themselves actually become sort of mentor schools to some of the newer schools, because we like to have that mix of schools that have been with us and schools that are new. They really, really do learn from each other.
Thank you.
The funding, the funding again is for the next three years, or three-year cycles, and that helps us to really be able to plan and go deeper. When we first started, we had planning grants, and we were sort of year to year, and the schools would say, well, are you going to be around? Are you going to be around? So, it's very helpful that Sherwood has generously funded us another three years based on the data and the research that's come out of this three-year, being able to really get immersed in those schools.
Thank you. If, just for future, if you guys can send us as much data, not just so we know the impact in the classroom, I appreciate that a lot.
Yeah, that shouldn't be difficult to do. We get it on a very regular basis in terms of the offerings and as they come out, so we can.
Oh, you don't have to send it every?
Yeah, that's what I was going to ask, so if you could clarify with Mr. Ray, how often you mean often, and because we have very regular meetings. And this is also for the Minnesota Humanities Center offerings. When we send those out, sometimes it may feel as if you're CC'd on those, but those are actually direct invitations. As a leadership within our district, we as well are involved in this work, and our, you know, in the future work will be getting more deeply involved with attending the different offerings that are there. So, when you see those come out, whether it's reconstructing curriculum, and you think to yourself, well, I don't write a curriculum now, don't look at it that in that way. Whatever your role is within the district, and for you guys as board members, each one of these offerings will speak to the role that you have. Your lens will be important, and so, I would recommend that as you see these opportunities come up, consider attending and being a part of that.
Thank you for the invite. Any other?
I wanted to say one more thing about the data piece. And Russia's coming up, the packet, the piece that you have, it's condensed and concise with a lot of powerful information. I would say highlighted, but we made it so that it wouldn't get messed up in your folder, so there for carrying around without getting worn down, so that you could read them on a regular basis.
Thank you.
I just want to be very clear and transparent about data and achievement data. We're an external partner to you. We do now finally have an MOA, and that's great, but our data is not built into the OPS system. That's something that we are working on and looking at to say, what's the correlation between the work that we do with an actual school where we've been there a long amount of times? The process for our evaluation has been external on the work we actually do with educators themselves. It doesn't link directly into student achievement data. And a key to that also is because it's voluntary participation. So, there is, that's something that we are really excited about working with research and evaluation, which I have to say have been amazing partners, and we're looking at how we can figure that out, what are some benchmarks that we can start to look at that would give us that direct link and connection directly to achievement and what's happening in the schools.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Sharif. Thank you so much, Minnesota Humanities, and everyone that stayed to the end for the, Mr. Fred Marissette, former OPS administrator, a good friend of mine. There is no receiving reports?
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
I move that the Board of Education go into closed session for the protection of the public interest and for the prevention of needless injury to the reputation of individuals to discuss with the Superintendent, Secretary to the Board, and Legal Counsel pending litigation, legal advice, and negotiations.
There's a motion by Ms. America, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Holman. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Snow?
Aye.
Cassidy?
Aye.
Godding?
Aye.
Holman?
Aye.
America?
Aye.
Pearlman?
Aye.
Scanlon?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Eight I.
Eight I. Motion carries. Let me remind the Board that the purpose for closed session is for the protection of the public interest and for the prevention of needless injury to the reputation of individuals to discuss with the Superintendent, Secretary to the Board, and Legal Counsel pending litigation, legal advice, and negotiations. Let the record reflect, the Board went into closed session at 9:45.
Are we good? Let me remind the board, came out of closed session at 10:25, 10:25. Let me remind the, for the record, the board adjourned at 10:25.